I call to order the Waverly City Council for April 3, 2017. Let us rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Your great God of creation, as thy love for all that thou hast made undergirds the becoming of who we are, we in this town acknowledge thy presence to be the anchor to who we are. May the gift of love abound in all that we do, and may this church season of Lent and the Easter of our societal celebration bring joy, human bonding, that are pleasurable in thy sight. For this we pray. Amen. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as distributed by our city clerk, Carla Guyer?
Approval of the agenda?
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded. Council discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no. This becomes our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the March 20th minutes?
I move approval of the March 20 minutes.
Second.
It's motion seconded. Council discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no. Unanimously approved. We have the privilege of a wonderful guest councilperson for the month of April named Brian Bergen. And he, we know, probably see his face and know, think of Warburg College, but I'm going to ask a little bit of background, maybe a little introduction to the town as we start this meeting. Brian?
So my name is Brian Bergen. I moved into Waverly in 1999, although we bought a house in 98. My wife moved here in 97. I've been teaching at Warburg since 2000. We have three children. My oldest is a junior at the high school, and my youngest is a fourth grader at St. Paul's. And I teach math at Warburg College.
Ta-da. Well, thank you very much. Good to have you with us. You have full voice. Are there any public comments on any items not on tonight's agenda? Any public comments on anything not on tonight's agenda?
Yes.
You're welcome.
Right down here?
Right there.
I'm assuming that. Okay. Where do we start the clock? I want to make sure I stay within five minutes.
He got the clock.
Okay, very good. Greetings, Mayor. Greetings, Council. My name is Justin Scott. I'm the founder and director of the Eastern Iowa Atheists. There are many atheists throughout Waverly. There are many atheists that attend Warburg College. We, it was brought to my attention that there are prayers done at the city council here. So we wanted to look at how diverse are the prayers? Do we welcome other groups, other religious voices or nonreligious voices? The research, excuse me, that I found shows that primarily they're done by Mayor Enfelt, and that means that the majority of them are Christian in nature. I am here to speak on behalf of many of the atheists in your community that either didn't grow up Christians or did grow up Christian and are no longer Christian, that are very offended by this, but cannot come out and speak publicly about it for fear of how they're going to be perceived by doing so. So I'm here to speak on their behalf. Our group has asked to speak and deliver an invocation at some point, so I would like the council and the mayor to consider that. My email address is in the email as well, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take any of your thoughts on this. But lastly, I just want to remind the council and the mayor that although it's common to think that we are a Christian nation and that this might be a Christian town, it's not. So I would request equal treatment for atheists and non-Christians in your community, and I'm wondering in this five minutes if there's any discussion to be had about this. Thank you.
Thank you. The prayers are theistic, I remind you. I do not invoke one part of the theistic perspective over another. So, just so you know that. So your perspective would be that you do not approve of a theistic approach in beginning to a meeting?
Not so much a theistic.
That's what I do, though.
But as I look at the history of, excuse me, as I look at the history of the prayers that have been given, it doesn't seem that there is an opportunity for a Muslim prayer or a Buddhist prayer or a secular invocation or anything to that nature. And I'm curious if it's ever been done in the past.
No, but that's because I'm covering the theistic side of life to include all people who are theistic.
So how do we include the members of your community that are not theistic, that would like to come here and take part in this, but do it in a way where their views are respected and welcomed?
I suppose you can just say your own quiet, little whatever reflection you'd like, and, and just allowing the diversity of this nation, that, that we have an approach here that is as inclusive as we can be and, and still embrace all the, the theistic people.
So is it fair to say that there's no representation outside of your invocation at the start, then?
It's fair to say that I include all the theistic people.
Right, but the city of Waverly is made up of non-theists as well.
That's what I'm doing. I'm including all the theistic people. That's what I'm trying to say.
Right. What I'm saying is us atheists are not theistic.
I heard you, but I'm trying to say I'm including all the theistic people.
Right, but that excludes the non-theists.
This has been covered in this country for many decades, as you know, and the reason that we have inclusive prayers at the beginning of many governmental functions is because we have an ability and freedom in this country to invoke a higher power in our, in our, in our approach to city business, transactions within the nation. And it deepens us, it broadens us, and I do it in ways that shouldn't be offensive to anyone. If you don't, if you resonate with that, that's fine. Just be tolerant of everyone who is.
So again, no representation of others are allowed.
So I'm asking you just be tolerant of all of us who are theistic.
So if there's a city council member?
This is what we do in this nation, yeah. That's why you have prayers all over.
Excuse me. So if there's a city council member that's not theistic, they're supposed to just sit there quietly and mind their business while you do that?
How much time? Do we have more?
Is, I mean, if this is, if this is bothering you, I can step back, but I feel like you're avoiding the question.
Appreciate your reflections and...
So at this point, no representation outside of your view?
No represent, at this point, there's no representation beyond the theistic approach. That's as broad as prayer as you can get.
But an invocation is not a prayer. It's interesting that your guest council member, I hate to bring you into this, but you, you teach the millennial generation, and one out of three millennials is nonreligious. So if a millennial is in this room right now, one out of three of them does not get covered by your invocation?
When you're saying one out of three are nonreligious, I think that that means one out of three do not belong to an organized religion.
Correct.
That's not the same as saying one out of three is atheist.
Never said that, and good point. I'm glad you brought that up.
So I am not speaking for the mayor, but I'm pretty sure that if someone had a invocation that they wanted stated at the beginning, a prayer so that our mayor isn't on the spot every week having to come up with something off the top of his head. I mean, I know that when he's giving the prayer, he's not reading something down. So I'm sure that he would embrace the opportunity if a Muslim or a Buddhist or even an atheist were to come up with some kind of an appropriate invocation.
I'm glad you brought this up. I've delivered Waterloo's first-ever secular invocation. I happened to email Mayor Enfelt twice in the last two months with no response. So the opportunity is there.
So when you say delivered, you mean you were the one who said it at the?
I personally delivered Waterloo's first-ever atheist prayer.
Do you live in Waterloo?
No, I do not, but I did at the time.
Do you live in Waverly?
At this point, if a Waverly resident wanted to deliver a atheist prayer or a secular invocation, would they be invited to?
Cross that bridge later, I guess.
Yeah, I think one thing that's different, what both of you are talking about, when I first started on city council, we had a different person from every church come in every month, because we only do it at the first meeting of every month. And so the mayor never really, I don't think the mayor ever gave a prayer back when I first started. It was a different person from a different church every single month that would come in and do that. So it did cover whoever wanted to come in. He actually had to reach out and try to find people to do that. So that's one.
And I would welcome that. I did some research and noticed that.
That's probably one difference that you've noticed, you know, since the shift, but I don't know if we've ever had an atheist per se, but we did, used to rotate pastors and priests and things through town, so.
I would encourage that. I will, I will digress, but I would encourage and really recommend that the city council take a look at that, maybe bring more people in. And if I could offer to recommend some atheist and humanist voices to speak, I'd be happy to help.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Then we move to our consent calendar. We have five items. Tonight's consent calendar, they are: Asplund Company has a bill for our trail work. We have the, the regional government, Intercog, has a bill for the comprehensive plan review. Stanley Consultants has a bill for the Parkway work. Baker Concrete has a bill for our golf pond work, and we have a liquor license for Walmart. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second, please. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no. Approved. Regular business item number one is a resolve to use slurry sealing on 39th Street Southeast. City administrator, this is a new word, I think, for many of us. Maybe some briefing for the public would be helpful.
Yes, sir. As you know, we've approved the seal coating for parts of the city going forward. This is a slightly different process to accomplish the same thing. If you want to get into the detail of how it works or the vast difference, I know it was in the attached document, but I'm sure Mike can give you a view of what it is, the difference, why we're doing it, if that's what the council prefers to hear.
It's very close to the Batuminous Seal Coat Program, right?
Similar. Mike, if you want to give a real brief?
Yeah, maybe just, just for the public.
Difference among the two and why we're trying this. Appreciate it.
In, in Waverly, we're used to traditional seal coating, where you spray the oil and sprinkle the chips on top, and then you, you roll it and compress it and rely a tremendous amount upon the local traffic to, to do that, help bed the rock. The dilemma with that is the parking area doesn't get much traffic and the aggregate doesn't bed very well, so we tend to have a lot of raveling. 39th Street has paved shoulders, which will probably get virtually no traffic. So seal coating is not really a good viable option for that type of a situation. And so another option would be a slurry seal, where the process is you use the same size aggregate, but you precoat it in like a bath of oil, and then it is spread as a thin layer over the surface. And then it is allowed to set before traffic is put back up on it. The disadvantage is you have to close it to traffic for a period of time, so you have to kind of be selective in where you use this type of application. The benefit is that there's no waste aggregate that ends up having to be swept up or cleaned up later. So we're looking at this as a bit of a pilot project or a trial to see if this might have application elsewhere in town, such as some of our public parking lots that are paved with asphalt. Where you have the ability to close the parking lot or close the road, this might be an attractive alternative to a traditional seal coat.
Thank you. A motion, please?
I'll move Resolution 1738, a resolution awarding the 39th Street Southeast Slurry Ceiling Project 2017 to Fort Dodge, Iowa for the bid amount of $34,322.72.
One second, please. Second. Motion second. Council discussion.
Mike, is this more, more expensive than the traditional seal coating?
It is. It's about twice the cost, but as I said, there are certain advantages to it, that you, you don't have any waste aggregate and the cleanup afterwards like you do with our traditional seal coat.
How long does it have to be closed?
About, it, it's a day-long operation, so it, it's depending on the humidity and the temperature, it, it might be four hours or, or six to eight hours.
More discussion? Public input? Roll call vote, please.
Cade?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Resnick?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Resolution 17-38 unanimously approved. Regular business item number two is to repair the protective liners in our sanitary sewer manhole covers where needed. City administrator, a quick briefing on the problem that we're needing to address here?
Some of the manhole areas are in very poor condition or allowing water infiltration in the sewer system or storm system, and so we're looking to repair those as they come about, and it's out to accomplish this. Mike, am I missing anything?
These are typically brick manholes that were built in the 1930s and 40s and before you had the precast concrete. So they, they, a lot of times the brick mortar is, is crack deteriorating, allowing water to infiltrate. So this is a process where you go inside and use a cement mortar to line the inside. They also have some special additives that help seal up those, those cracks as well to prevent the water from infiltrating. We have over 1,200 sanitary sewer manholes within the community. Again, these are primarily the brick manholes that we're concentrating on that were probably put in, in the 1930s. The alternative is that you do a total manhole replacement, which is very disruptive. It tears up the street, as well as you then have to possibly deal with settlement issues around that for years to come in the future. So this is a way to repair the manhole, extend the life for, for hopefully decades, and do it without disruption to the neighborhood or traffic.
Thank you. Motion, please.
I move Resolution 1739, a resolution awarding sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation 2017 project to Visu Sewer Incorporated of Pewalki, Wisconsin for the bid amount of $23,874.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion second. Council discussion.
So what happens after a couple of decades, then, Mike? Then, then you do have to replace them?
Yep. It, it's an ongoing process where, you know, we try to get to inspect every manhole about every seven years. And so it's an ongoing process to, when they go in and do their, their sewer cleaning and access the manhole, they also fill out an inspection report. So this is a way to help us identify and track the condition of these manholes so that we can target our efforts on repair and maintenance to maximize the life of our infrastructure.
Can they be treated that way again, if they start to have issues?
Probably at that point, it'd be looking at a replacement.
More counsel? Public input? Roll call vote, please.
Angus?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Resnick?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Cade?
Yes.
Resolution 17-39 unanimously approved. Regular business item number three is the trade of an old tractor in the Public Works Department for a new. City administrator, it's pretty routine, but maybe a little background would be helpful here.
Yes, sir. Bids were sent out to local vendors, five different bids were received. The Kubota being recommended was the lowest of the bid after trade-in from Deike Implement. This tractor we're trading in is approximately 20 years old. If you look at the photos, there's a little puddle underneath it. That's not water. That's oil dripping out of it. It's just had some issues with maintenance, repair, and so it's time to trade that out, and that's what we're attempting to do here.
Form a motion to be in order.
I will move the approval of purchase of a Kubota tractor from Deike Implement of Waverly, Iowa, for the net. This is a really small print I'm reading, folks, sorry. For the net-delivered price of $45,680, which includes trade-in of a 1997 white 6065 tractor for $12,000.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion second. Council discussion.
Oh, go ahead, Dave.
You went first.
I, it's, I'm just curious. In our materials, it, it mentioned something about that the body, you know, might also be needing repair, and I'm just wondering why that even matters. I mean, I get the oil, but I'm just curious about the body on something like this. Is that, is that important?
Yeah, if it's structural, then that's some of the issue they're having, some of the rust and the welds and trying to get that repaired. So eventually, you'll have to re-weld that, and it's getting to the point where with the maintenance and the repairs at the 20-year mark, it's just ready to be traded out.
I guess I was just curious, what's this tractor used for? And what kind of, what are we looking for, for specs for the comparison models? Or what was the, what was the goal? Or what was, what was the specs required for the bid?
We have those, if you'd like to look at them. I don't have them with me.
I was just curious, off the top of your head, are, what kind of things are you looking for?
Well, this is, one, the smaller of the two tractors that we have, this is used as a utility tractor. We use it for doing a lot of mowing, whether that's roadside mowing, mowing or other applications like that. So if you're looking for a complete list of that, I can provide that as well as the specifications.
Yeah, I was just curious, kind of what you're looking for. Yeah, really. The, the new one's probably set up with turf tires. I saw that, just looking at the pictures. It's probably a stock photo or something, but...
It's a stock photo, yeah.
More counsel? Public input? City clerk, this takes a roll call vote. No, it doesn't. Voice vote. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no. Approved. Regular business item number four is the lease of some of our unused Champion Ridge acreage for 2017 farming. Let's go directly to a motion.
I'll move Resolution 1740, a resolution approving a lease for the city of Waverly-owned farmland to Mark Mueller for 35.3 acres for $9,601.60 to pay, be paid in one increment on May 1, 2017, located at Champion's Ridge.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion second. Council discussion.
I guess this was, just maybe to clarify, it's not necessarily excess land. It's just the land until they build, right? Yeah, yep. Champion's Ridge land, they're just, just renting until, yep.
I was just generally, again, curious when, when we're dealing with something like this. And do, I, I know it, our, our materials pointed out that we worked with the fair board on this. But do we ever use, you know, farm managers or anybody like that to sort of assess rental pricing and things like that?
What we did in this case is that, actually, the, the fair put it out to bid, so they had a number of bidders. So they did a bid process. A lot of the fair board people are farmers and knew how to do that and how to get the people there. And we have about three farmers around that, this area that, that do pick up farmland, and so all of them were involved in that bidding process.
This, I see it's worth 35 acres, and now we own, what, 60-some total, is?
We don't have the other property yet, and actually, that's under contract with another farmer who's going to keep that contract. And when we do buy it, we'll get the farm rent from that farmer.
Okay. We probably missed the rental date.
Termination date.
More counsel? Public input? Public input? Roll call vote, please.
Lampy.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resnick.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Gade.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Resolution seventeen dash forty unanimously approved. Regular business item number five is to hire McClure Engineering to be our airport's on-call airport consultant for engineering services in the future. Anything more than what I just said, city administrator, or?
Just briefly, every roughly five years, we go out and do this process to look ahead for five years, see what projects may be coming. And then we interview or go through engineering companies to help us facilitate those projects when they come up. And in this case McClure was hired again to be our on-call engineering service provider if these projects go to fruition in the next five years. So it is intend a on-call as-needed engineering company instead of having to do an RFP for every single small project comes along.
Got you. Formal motion, please.
I'll move resolution seventeen dash forty-one, a resolution approving a master agreement for on-call engineering services with McClure Engineering Company for the Waverly Municipal Airport.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion second. Council discussion.
Just to clarify what you said, they're just holding, they won't get paid anything unless we move forward with something and then they.
That's correct. If we have a project to do, they would do it and then be paid at the time.
There's no like retainer fee or anything like that.
There, there's no retainer. There would be an amendment to this master agreement that would go before council for approval for every, every project.
Is this, is this something that we can do in-house or is that, or is it the complexity that we need to hire out for this type of work or?
It, it depends on, these tend to be more complex projects rather than small projects, like the runway reconstruction was, was one of those projects. They're listed on the backside of the agenda memo here. So most, they, definitely if they're federal aid funded, given the, the, the volume of federal paperwork that you have to navigate through, it's definitely to the city's advantage to bring them on board. Additionally, their services then become eligible for ninety percent reimbursement.
There's no, there's no process for competitive bidding then, after that? I mean, is there a rate structure that they go by? We have a?
You don't competitively bid professional services. You're, you're legally not even allowed to.
Oh, you're not? I didn't know that.
We did have three consultants. I think we sent out, well, we, we, we sent out invites to, I think, at least eight. It was published. We got three proposals back. There was a consultant selection committee. We had the chair of the airport commission. We had another airport commissioner, myself, and the council liaison, Tim Kangas, was part of that committee, so.
So Mike, just to follow up on that, if you can't do competitive bids, what are the criteria that the committee uses to decide who's the best choice?
Experience and qualification of the firm and the personnel that are going to be involved in any future work that we would have. So you, you, you go as far as identifying as much of the work as possible. That's where you see on here identified, like extend runway, the runway, that would potentially be a federal project. These are, come out of our five-year approved. We, the, the council in November reviews and approves kind of this five-year plan. It's not that you're committed to doing any of them, but identifies what projects you are considering doing and may do in, in the next five years. So those are identified within the request for qualifications. And so they will tailor their, their statement of qualifications to match those projects that you may have coming up in the next five years.
Thank you.
Have we had this engineering, have we had an on-call engineer for the last five years? Is this like a reappointment of something or is this just a brand-new appointment in anticipation of the upcoming projects?
We went through this process seven years ago. And at that time, the selection committee identified and recommended McClure Engineering. We're at, at this point, again, that we needed to update this. We did start the process two years ago, but we did not have any new federal aid projects coming on board in the next couple of years. So we actually kind of tabled it and said, we want to revisit it at the point where we're getting closer to having another federal aid project so that we could maximize that five years as much as possible. Otherwise, the first two years would have been, in effect, wasted. So they had to submit statements of qualifications, just like the other firms. And so you, you, in effect, start all over again. Certainly, they are very familiar with the work that's been done at the Waverly Airport, but they also have to show that they have the qualified personnel for the upcoming projects, for the future projects. And one thing that you see identified is, is the potential construction of additional hangar facilities. And so that would be something, I guess, new that we haven't done in the past five years.
Okay. Public input?
And McClure is the company we've had recently in the last contract, so they are familiar with our airport specific. Please with what they've done with us, so that's kind of leaning, at least I had, towards them.
Thank you. Public input on this one? Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resnick.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Gade.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
Resolution seventeen dash forty-one is unanimously approved. Regular business item number six is to move towards completion of the airport safety project through acquiring the Klan Properties land by eminent domain. Is there a motion?
Would move resolution seventeen twenty-eight, a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property by eminent domain for the Klan Properties LLC, real property for the Waverly Municipal Airport Safety Zone project for the appraised market value of two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Council discussion.
I guess maybe I'll, I'll start the discussion. I guess I'm, probably as I, as I think through this, the, I ask, you know, I guess I ask the council, what's the need to expand the airport four hundred feet? Which requires us to basically force people out of their homes. I'm, I guess I'm curious. I don't, I don't see the value. So maybe, I guess that would be what I would ask. What's, what's the purpose?
A quick response. I think there's better responses, but quick response is this is necessary for the, for the airport, period. Where the, this isn't, it is impossible to have an airport if we don't have, with, if we don't, aren't meeting FAA regulations. And this is part of the condition of running an airport. And, and this is not, I don't think there are any homes involved here, this smaller property. Nope, nobody's lived in any home that I know in the last five years. Don't think so.
But this isn't, I guess, we could clarify that, but the FAA is not requiring us to extend the runway?
No, we're not.
No, this would be done no matter whether you extend the runway or not.
No. Not true.
It isn't? That's what I've been told.
The only reason we have to do.
This is what I, I met with.
We just repaved the entire runway last summer and we didn't, this was not required.
This is.
The only reason it's required is because of the extension.
No, if any other improvements at the airport, like if we wanted to do additional hangars, we would have to have the safety zone.
That's untrue. Is it?
That's my understanding.
If you want to use federal funds for the hangars, yes.
Yes. So, and we just used federal funds and repaved the entire length of the runway last summer, right?
Yes, you're allowed to, to preserve and maintain, but you're not allowed to use federal funds to expand the usage of the airport without first complying with the minimum safety standards.
Yep, so.
But the hangars could be, I mean, we've got hangars today that are in the safety zone or in the proposed safety zone, across through the line.
But we control the usage.
Okay. So then why, so we could put new hangars behind those buildings that would be outside of the safety zone?
Behind what buildings?
Behind the current hangars.
That's the plan, is to add new hangar facilities between the old entrance and the new entrance.
But they'd be outside of the safety zone, though.
Right, but they'd be at a hundred percent of our cost if we don't have the control of the safety zone.
The safety zone is a precondition for, I think, almost any addition to what we have there now, if I'm understanding it correctly.
If you're using federal funds.
Yes.
Want the ninety percent.
I guess I, we've never talked about expanding hangars ever before, though.
I think, I think we have.
Other councils have. It's been in the airport layout plan, in those updates that other councils have reviewed and approved.
Are all of our hangars used today?
They're all full right now. I checked that just, just yesterday.
But it is true that we can keep our airport exactly the way it is, keep having the existing runway repaired, replaced every twenty-five years or whatever it takes, just like we did this summer. And we don't have to do any, take any land for airport safety.
Until such time as they maybe change the standards. I mean, that's, that's.
That's a hypothetical, that's what you're saying.
The current.
The current rules right now is our runway just had a brand-new.
Yep, you're allowed, you're allowed to maintain and preserve.
And we can fix the hangars up. We can do anything we want.
Well, you're not going to get, you're not going to get federal dollars for hangar facilities.
Okay. But I've seen past that we've gotten state and local funds for a lot of those things.
But you haven't received federal funds.
But we've still done them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So your point is that we don't need federal funds because we've done it before without them.
I mean, a hangar, a hangar is probably, you know, I would even say that a hangar cost is probably, in my, in my mind, hangar cost is insignificant to the cost of taking someone's home. So we can build a building so somebody can put a hobby plane there? I, I guess that doesn't qualify my book. We're not, we're not putting, we're not, so, so the reason I ask the question, I, you know, I look at, you know, if we're, it's not required for safety today because we've got the runway today. Economic development, I would have a challenge to thinking that we would actually add economic development or somehow grow our city by increasing the runway four hundred feet. And, you know, the funding requirement we've talked about, but, so that's why a challenge, to me, it was, I, I question the need to force people off their farms and out of their homes because we've got other. Can you tell me who's being forced out of their homes, who's living? There's a home there. Who's living there? There's a home there. Who's living there? It doesn't, that's. Well, if there's nobody living there, you're not forcing anybody out.
Tim, they would be living there.
That's circumstantial.
Can I speak about this?
There's also a business there.
You're, you're going to be there in a second. I'm going to have public input in about two seconds. Just wait one second.
So what, and I, you know, maybe, you know, you, you know, during our budget time, you asked me to show my work and I didn't, you know, the budget was going to pass no matter what. And we had the Champion's Ridge people waiting, so I didn't want to sidetrack that topic. Here, I can go through the data that shows there's literally fifteen people that use this airport more than a few times a year. And for us, you know, if we would add hangars, would that increase? So what I found is, so I, so I wondered if, if we would add four hundred feet, would that increase the, the size of planes? It can't. And I've actually found, so I've got all data from all the airports in the state and I've actually found there's airports smaller than us that have larger equipment than us. There's airports, and I, so I was interested if the airport length gets larger, you know, up to four thousand feet, would we see larger planes? And I've, I've found airports that it doesn't seem to be a direct correlation. They have four hundred thou, or four thousand feet runways and it's the same equipment that we have in ours. So I, so I really questioned the value in, you know, if everyone agreed, and this has been my stance all along, if everyone agreed to this, fine, because we're paying for it with fuel tax, not taxpayer money. But if we have people that don't agree and we'll hear that they're being forced off a farm and we've got another landowner that would be forced out of a home as well for fifteen people? You know, the number one business in this airport is actually the fixed-based operator. The number one business, the top ten is the National Guard. So we're actually forcing people out of their business or out of their business, a farm, out of their home for private business. And to me, that's, I, I can't, I can't wrap my arms around it. I, personally, I don't feel ethical in doing that. So that's why I asked if there's, if there's an economic reason that I'm missing, that we're going to grow the city by expanding the airport. We can't, we can't land corporate jets there. So it's not like, you know, a company's going to move to town, they're going to start, you know, they're going to locate there because of the access to the airport. And quite honestly, I found, I found some information because we're within thirty miles of a regional airport, you know, there's probably a question that we should be expanding it in the first place. We're, we're thirty miles within the Waterloo Airport. It's a fifteen-minute drive. So I question if we should expand any, any direction or just utilize.
What, what other businesses are even encouraged to go to Waterloo instead of Waverly? You're encouraging anybody that might want to use the airport to go to Waterloo instead of.
But you can't land a larger plane. You can, you can land everything today.
Right.
Large corporations, yeah. Large corporations do not allow their VPs or hire anyone to take, to land on, on controlled airspace. So Kuni Mutual.
Right, right now.
When they had a jet, Kuni Mutual never used the airport because they could not use it.
I'm just saying in general, he's saying anybody that wants to use an airport, just go to Waterloo.
That's not what he's saying.
Yeah, that's what he just said.
No, listen to what he's saying. He's saying we have an.
Fifteen miles away is what he said.
Tim, 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 Tim.
West, 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 west.
Yes.
That's what he said.
Make fun of me. But we have an airport that is perfect today. And Edie can laugh too. It's perfect because we just redid the runway. So everyone that's using it today can use it tomorrow, can use it next year, can use it five years from now, ten years from now. That thing is brand-new with concrete and going to be there for twenty-five, thirty years. Perfectly good airport that we've always had.
It is new and it's far from perfect.
What, it has a brand-new, perfect runway on it.
It is a new runway. It is not perfect. Anybody will tell you that the length of the runway itself is, is not.
And adding four hundred feet is perfect?
It enhances the safety for it, yes. Right now pilots have to.
Or who?
Have to go, the, any pilot that wants to use it.
The twelve?
I mean, a lot of it has to do with insurance premiums. Think, think of this twenty-eight hundred-foot runway for many of the, the operators, Cedar Valley Aviation, that, that is.
It's a private company that runs their airport.
No.
Yes.
Excuse me. Aerial Services, a global company that is mapping around the world.
Yes.
Has their flight operation base stationed at our airport.
And we pay them to, they get free gas. They, they're our fixed-based operator.
No, no, you're confusing Cedar Valley Aviation with Aerial Services.
Okay.
They're owned by the same company, Mike.
No, they're not. They're owned.
They're, they're within each other. They work together.
They're employees of Aerial Services that own Cedar Valley Aviation as a side business. To say that they're the same, I think they would take issue with that.
They're not the same. They do different services, but they're part of.
This is.
Cedar Valley Aviation employees.
Let Mike speak.
We'd like to hear what Mike has to say.
I want to hear what Mike says.
Well, I'm just trying to get what he just said there, so.
So this is like.
Say it first.
For them to operate out of our airport is like living within a hundred-year floodplain. Their insurance premiums are much, much higher because of the risk involved. The extension of the runway is like being taken out of the hundred-year floodplain. And their insurance premiums drop because of the additional safety factor brought by the length. We do have multiple businesses operating off, out of the Waverly Airport. We also support the ag economy in the surrounding area.
You name some.
And I, I think that the better person to discuss this or the better entity would be the airport commission. And had I known that this discussion was going to go to that direction, I think it would be very appropriate to invite them to join in this discussion.
You honestly thought you were going to do an eminent domain and not have a system? You honestly thought you were gonna do an eminent domain and not have us discuss the airport? You didn't know that ahead of time?
I think that we've pretty well established the, that we're determined to allow the airport to grow with, with the town. I think we've established that the airport is important to the town as we grow. I will add an addendum, that CMI, when I did talk with them, listed one, the airport as one of the assets that they saw in our town. I think that what we're moving towards is going from 2,800 to 3,800 feet on the runway. 3,200, I meant to say, on the runway for safety, for planes that we're already using on this runway, and also, as Mike said, for just the insurance, because it is too short. We are looking to expand hangar space, we are looking to continue to grow as a town with the airport, and the airport with the town. That's the basics behind this.
Can I take a couple of minutes next, to show the, I think that if I show the data, it might, it might spur some conversation.
I like that, I just say one thing, too, so what you just said was, is you want to help a private business lower their insurance rates, and take someone's business, farm, and home away from them for that.
This is our...
CMI came...
Away from them to lower your insurance rates.
They actually agreed to sell it, we never went eminent domain.
Yeah, they agreed to sell, but we took their home away.
We did not take their home, they sold it to us. We never, we never took a home.
That's almost a lie.
All those, all...
No, it's not a lie, their home is gone, it's gone, they're out.
But they sold it, they agreed to sell it, just like...
Mm-hmm.
And they could still do that here, this is just a step in the process.
No, this, yeah, no, it's not.
And as far as whether there's 15, or 20, or 30, we're right now, we have a smaller group because we only have so many hangars. If we were able to build more hangars, there would be more people that would have planes here that would use the airport. So that's a kind of a false argument.
Yeah, I don't know.
As long as we keep it small, don't let anybody use it, then we can keep saying, well, nobody uses it.
On the DOT website, on the, on the DOT website, the average number of planes per day was listed at, I think, 23.
It's one of the busier airports in Iowa.
You have to look at who uses it, though. So Cedar Valley Aviation will take off and come back multiple times, that's one company.
Sure, but I'm, that's the...
If you're looking at the number of people who actually use it, it is extremely, extremely small.
Well, and then we do all the ag business during the summer, in the fall.
Yep, you'll see it, there's one company who does that, yes.
And it is the, the lure that gets us into new businesses as well.
But they still do it, they already do that, Mayor. They already do, all those businesses already do that.
Dave said they could go to Waterloo, it's only 15 minutes away.
They could go anywhere, any, CUNY Mutual could just move at any time, Tim, we don't, I mean...
So you don't support trying to keep them here, keeping the business here?
They're not, the crop dusting company is not asking us to do this. They're gonna buy from Schneider's Millie like they always do, and they're always gonna take off from that runway. 400 feet isn't gonna do anything.
All of our businesses, always, they do like the airport, and they do think it's important.
Which ones use it?
You say the all way.
He said all, he just said all businesses in our town use the airport, I, can you name one?
Then I'll withdraw the all.
Can you name one?
Maybe I'll just, if, if I can just take a, take a minute and show some information. I guess first, so, the background where the data comes from, it's, so the, the airport actually submits data monthly to the FAA. Every airport in the state or across the country, there's not a requirement to the FAA to, to report this level of detail, they report it. The rest, they report data that's basically for a flight plan, so I've got that to all the airports across Iowa. So this, so this is basically what I, so I've got all the data, as you, as you see, the left-hand goes, it's by year, so I can create a, what I call a pivot table, so I can narrow it down to unique customers. So this is basically, and so the data comes to us basically with an end number or a tail number, but the FAA has a database where I basically was able to, it's 400,000 lines long, I can, but it, I basically linked the two, so I can take a, basically a registration number of the airport, or the airplane, and tie it to an owner, so I can put a name to a face. So 2015, I didn't use 2016, because we were closed, and our, and our, our data obviously slowed, slowed white, quite down, but if you look at 2015, you see the top users, here's the businesses, so here's all the businesses that we're talking about that we're gonna take these folks' farm. You can see, and this, so basically, this is the number, so they, they, they map the, the arrivals and the departures, so I, so I've got both of those, and this is that data, so you can see the top, there's 200, it goes on to 63, drops down...
I'm sorry, I interrupted you, Dave.
What's that?
Can you hold the microphone?
Oh, sorry, so the, you can see it drops down, like I said, there's, there's a, a small number. So there's Aerial Services and Cedar Valley Aviation, I can pull those apart, but since on the website they're connected, I included those, aerial imaging. So, Tim Newton, so if you look at, and they also categorize them by the nature of the business, and they, they show themselves as ag, so if I would add a couple more years... You're causing me to do Excel on, in public here, but, so if I do a couple more years, you can see it's, you know, it's really, you know, last year, they were out there once, so they landed, or they took off, I'm not sure, I, I can go back to the data. So you can see there's, it's highly variable, so you can see that the businesses that were, were here this year, you know, last year, and I, and I, I don't, you know, I hate to show the names, but if we're kicking somebody off a farm, and we're saying all the businesses in town are using this, I think we need, we need to look at the names. National Guard, and then it drops down. So, so I tried to summarize, summarize this in a, in a PowerPoint, so basically, so I basically did a very simple, basically put them in buckets, you can see if they use the airport more than 200 times a year, 100 to 200 times, 51 to 100, 21 to 50. You can see the vast majority use the airport over the last five years, five times or less. And so that, so that's my concern. You know, there's, there's 443 unique customers, but we saw there's, there's probably 15 or so that are using. I've got that list later. So this, what I've done here is basically, and this is an eye chart, I apologize, but right in the middle is Waverly. So what this is, is the airport length, and the diamond up here is basically their population. So you can see as you go down here, there's, there's towns like Pella, so you can see the, the population is very similar to Waverly, and the airport length goes down quite a bit. So I was curious, who's actually landing on those airports? So from the FAA, I got, I got the data, and, and I guess I can show that, but I was, what I was hoping was, as the airport length increased in size, that maybe the equipment size got bigger. So we could see some of those, some of those businesses, you know, most businesses probably wouldn't, and I, I guess I don't wanna make any, any, any guesses, I guess, but I'm, I'm wondering how many businesses would actually, corporate business would use a single-engine plane, or whatever, but, but what I was hoping is, as the airport length got bigger, maybe the size of the equipment got bigger, but what I found was, the equipment was basically the same, and actually I found airport, airports less length than us that had jets. So I, so I called the FAA, and it's not impossible, it's not, I guess, something here, but I, the answer I got was, you can actually land a jet. So...
You have something to say back there?
What's that? Well, there's, there's actually jets on shorter runways, and I was, I know a guy that flies one, they can fly it, they can land it shorter than 2,800, but I saw it on a shorter runway, so that's what I was surprised, that they're, they're landing, by FAA, it had a flight plan, it was on a runway shorter than Waverly, but, so here's a list, basically inclusive, so, in the last five years, it goes from, you know, you saw the, the larger list, basically it goes down, and I cut it off at one. So here's the list of people, you can see here's five, six, or so, and it, and it varies, it varies every year. So what I, so really what I found was, the number of businesses, or people, or whatever, is, is very limited. I was hoping to find, and quite honestly, not too many of these people are from Waverly. You know, are we supporting Waverly, or are we supporting Cedar Valley Aviation, the National Guard? That's, I guess that's where I was coming at.
Thank you, David. I've been told by the airport management that if we had a longer runway, they would instantaneously have more, they would immediately have more landings.
And, and just to clarify, we're not kicking them off the farm, they would still be able to farm, correct, Bill?
It's 13 acres we're purchasing.
Right, but we would, in, in these others, we would lease, be able to lease it back to, for farm use?
Generally, we lease the, the entire safety zone back to the owner, we can't do that in this case, because part of that wouldn't be probably farmable, but most of it could be leased back.
Some of the concern about even, even expanding the airport, that's why I live, I live in, that's in my ward. If we would have planes going off every day, a lot of times they're cutting the tree, or not cutting the tree, but they're, they're very short, very close to the trees as they go through that neighborhood. I just, personally, I don't wanna see a lot of crop dusters doing that. And I obviously support that industry, but I don't, I guess, if we had, you know, 100 planes a day going across Hickory Heights, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if people would appreciate that, I don't know.
That's a good point.
I mean, if it was, you know, as I look at the other airports that are, that are longer, they're positioned a little bit different, this goes right across town, so...
Hickory's probably, shouldn't have built the airport by where the houses are.
We're gonna have more even, because Dolestrom bought the land behind Hickory Heights, right?
Yeah, so it'll be even closer.
My, my point is, I think people, when they bought houses there, probably should have been aware that there is an airport, because the airport has been there longer. I know when I bought my house, that, that I knew the airport was along that line.
But...
So if you buy by a railroad, do you have the right to say, we don't want the railroad to go there?
It's different if you, if the mayor says that the business is supposedly gonna double, maybe you had two planes a day, and now you're gonna have...
It's what's there, I mean, I guess the other option is, we're sell the airport.
And I think it's more similar, I mean, than you think, I mean, the air...
Why you have such extremes here? We already have an airport that runs and works and works every day fine, so we're not talking about getting rid of anything.
We're talking about improving and meeting FAA requirements.
Yes, but that's completely different, no one's talking about getting rid of the airport, not at all.
We've talked about center business is Waterloo.
But not, no one has said that.
What you also said, too, is that...
One at, one at a time, let's, I think, Councilman Wallstein, you were gonna say?
I, I was just going to say, I think one thing that we, we've forgotten, that I was reminded of when I just was trying to do some research on my own, too, is that this is a transportation corridor. In some ways, I think we forget to think about it like other transportation corridors, and to look to the future as a result, like we do for all transportation corridors. And I, I think, you know, I think sometimes that perspective is, is, is lost. And I just wanted to, you know, add that, and I guess the only other thing I'd add to the discussion here is that, to me, right now, although I understand the connection to expansion of the airport, right now, what we're dealing with, as I see it, I'm just trying to explain my view, is that this was a process that was started in 2012. And going back and trying to follow through on all the decisions that were made, that doesn't mean they can't be changed now, I understand that. But it seems that what this has led up to is really a discussion of a safety zone that allows us to look to the future without which we really can't for a transportation corridor. I mean, that's kind of how I'm seeing it right now, and I, you know, I, I am not a fan of eminent domain either. I, but I do see this as a, contrary to Dave, I know Dave has a different perspective on it, but it, it's not your, it's a grayer area, let me put it, for me it is, anyway, it's a grayer area where some, or quite a bit of negotiation has tried to be done, and can still continue, even if this decision is taken positively tonight. And positively, and by that, I mean a, a yes vote, if the yes, if, if a yes vote prevails. So, I guess that's all I have to say at this point.
I think before we vote, we ask for public input, and we have the Miller family right here, and I'm gonna ask them to come forward.
Ask out, can I just say one more thing before you talk? So, what Edie just said, being a transportation corridor, what Tim said about how everyone knows that when you buy a house, you live by the airport, if you buy a house next to a bridge, you know you're buying a house next to a bridge, and you're gonna have traffic. And we just voted recently, and Tim was one of those that voted against having cars go over a bridge because the neighborhood did not want traffic next to their house. So his argument of, if you build next to a bridge, you should assume you have cars go by your house, the next topic is to have a pedestrian bridge put in that place instead of cars. So, you can't have it both ways.
Okay, let's, let's, I wanna, I wanna move it on, that's enough, Council, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Christine Ellie, and I'm one of the, the kids of Eugene and Jolene Miller. I'm the oldest, so I get to, is that good, okay. So, I get nominated to always, you know, do this kind of thing, so, here I am. I came down from Minneapolis last night because I wanted to be here to share our side of the story. I think there's been a lot of things going on, and I think it's been going on since longer than 2012. My dad was talking to the airport before my mom died, she died nine years ago. And they were talking about, you know, eventually they wanted to do something to the airport, and my dad's, you know, he, we live, we've lived there for 50 years, we've had that farm for over 50 years. And, you know, he was willing to, you know, to talk to the city, and I think there was some talk about, you know, you know, after we're gone, then, you know, maybe something can be decided, but, so, anyway, after my dad died four years ago, then the four of us kids were, left the farm. And we came together and formed a limited liability corporation, and we've been really trying to keep the farm in our family, because it means a lot to us. So, we've been talking to the city ever since that time. We've been trying to negotiate, we feel like we're not, we're not really being negotiated with. We've been given some, you know, kind of ridiculous proposals, I would say, and we're, we know what it's worth, we're not gonna give it away. So, I, I disagree that anybody's been negotiating with us, because that hasn't been happening. And I, I'd also say that if you drive by the property, you'll see a house there. And the house could easily be repaired, and why do you think we didn't repair it? Because the city was going to condemn the property, so why would we spend any money on doing anything out there? So, we've been paying taxes on a dwelling for all this time, so, there's a house there. And if the city isn't gonna take the property, then we're gonna fix it, and we'll, either one of us will live there, or we can rent it. So, we operate a farm out of the property, we have a shed, a machine shed, and we store equipment there, we have grain bins. So we, we operate a business out of there, and we lease out the farmland. So, there's just a lot of things that I don't think you all have been aware of by just hearing that, you know, there's this property that's at the end of the runway, and, and we can take it by eminent domain. And if that's the route that you choose to go, then we're still gonna fight it. We, we know what it's worth, we will negotiate with you, but we, we wanna be paid fairly, and, and we know what it's worth, so if, if we can negotiate, we'd be happy to do so. And also, I know that there's been other properties that have been purchased, and some of the neighbors have gotten like two times the appraised value, so we're not quite sure why we're not being given, you know, a little bit better offer, like some of the other neighbors have. I think that's...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, for people to say there isn't a house there, for the last five years, according to the Bremer County... to the Breamer County Assessor, you've been paying taxes...
Yes.
For a house.
On a dwelling.
So you've had, so, according to State of Iowa and Breamer County, you have a house that you're paying tax?
Yes.
And have had to pay tax?
And I have a copy of my bill. Yes. Any other questions I can try to answer?
You, you say you know what it's worth, have you had it appraised?
No, but we can do that.
Okay.
We've actually talked to an appraiser that we're probably gonna have to hire.
Okay, 'cause our, my understanding of the process is the, the price that the city has established has come from appraisals that we've had to do, and that's what we have to go by, by the FAA. That's, that's the process that goes through.
But I think on top of what the appraised value is, the city can also pay additional funds.
Can you tell, can you tell me why, more specifically why, you didn't repair the house to have one of you live in it?
Because the city was gonna take it.
How do you know that?
I don't know, I think, um, there's information in the appraisal that talks about if, if the city were to take the property, but basically, we, you know, when we have been talking to people from the city, they made it sound like it had to be torn down. So why would we put money into it if it had to be torn down? We just didn't, it didn't make sense to us. And I think from some of the discussion here today, it doesn't sound like anything has to be done. It's, you know, it's something the city wants to possibly do, but it's not an FAA requirement to extend the runway.
Right. Well, my point is, so you've been paying taxes on a house, and being forced to pay taxes on a house, you, someone in your family would be living there if we were allowed to build it, and you would have refixed it up?
Yeah, we could've, I mean, we could start fixing it up tomorrow, but we thought it was gonna be torn down, so why fix it?
And you still run a business out of there?
Yes.
Which is, of the other buildings, you need running water, electricity, all that kind of stuff to do that, right?
Yep, our well is on the, across the line, we'd have to get the electrical moved. The trees would all be cut down, there would be no windbreak, we'd have to replace all the trees. So some of those things weren't in the appraisal, and I don't, I think there's different types of appraisals, and that appraisal didn't really truly quantify what the farm is worth. Didn't take into account the location, you know, it's two miles from the city of Waverly, it's a mile from Highway 218, it's a prime location, so.
Bill, can you talk to the process a little bit, as far as some of the negotiations and discussions on the house?
I put in the memo, the lengthy discussions, or the lengthy discussion about what we've done in the past. There was some, some negotiation that took place in 2014. And at that point, we actually reduced the number of acres that were being taken at their request. We had it appraised twice, actually three times, or twice, in, in that timeframe. We allowed them to keep, keep use of the building, the well, the drive coming in. We actually raised the offer above fair market value, very consistent with what we do with the other, the other properties around the airport. We did not pay twice the appraised value, we paid, paid ten percent on top of the appraised value. That was a fairly consistent number with all of the other properties. At no point did we ever get a counter offer in 2014. There was never a dollar amount, it was just a turning down the offer that we made, and the last offer was $395,000. So we let it alone for a couple of years, and then did a new appraisal. And given the lower valuations that are occurring now, the appraisal came in at $285,000 this time. We indicated that, that the FAA would let us do some negotiation as it did in the past, with allowing us to have some flexibility on price. We negotiated with the FAA again to allow use of part of the property, including the building, including the well, including the drive. And we're just not getting anywhere, because we really haven't gotten a, a concrete proposal back on what the dollar amount is. Now, I've been given some numbers at least this time, but that, that the ranges were very high. What we really wanna do in, in a negotiation like this is not probably do it here, because it should be done somewhere else. We've offered to do it, James and I offered to meet with, with the Millers. We're still willing to do it. Even if you vote tonight to, to allow us to move forward with the process, the legal process, we would still continue to conduct negotiations. But when negotiations are a long ways apart, saying you're, you're willing to do negotiations doesn't mean you're, that you're gonna get anywhere with those negotiations. We need to have an end game in this, we need to make sure that this will resolve itself at some point. The only way to do that is a process that the law allows, which allows a group of Breamer County residents, people who are, have experience in this type of thing, to get together and basically act as a jury to, to set the value that they would get. It allows us to present our appraisals from our two appraisers, it allows them to present an appraiser, and to argue for more money. And frankly, if that group decides that they should have more money, then they'll get more money. At this point, unless the city wants to pay the extra money itself, we're limited by what the FAA allows us to spend in purchasing this type of property. Again, there is some negotiation room, and I've told them that, and I've, I've been willing to do that. In fact, I, I think our past history shows that we've been willing to negotiate and raise those offers. But we have a limit to what the FAA allow us to do. Having the eminent domain as a, as a possible outcome allows us to do some serious negotiations, and, and to have a, a process to complete this process if we have to.
So, what you said, and I understand that, that you think by doing this, you'll have better negotiating tactics or timelines, but by voting for this, as you said, the end game will be, a small jury will decide how much money they get, but the end game, their land will be taken from them.
Their thirteen point six acres will be acquired from them at the price set by the, the commission that is, is set to do the evaluation.
This literally will be acquiring or taking their land from them, just a small jury decides what that price is.
Well, not necessarily a small jury, but it's a commission of people that are, that are chosen. And it's people that are on the list that have special knowledge in this area that are...
Yeah, but I just want you, this vote ends up in taking their land?
This vote does not end up in taking their land, it allows us to move forward with the process. We can negotiate a settlement at any time.
What is the end of the process?
The end of the process is the eminent domain proceeding.
Which is taking land?
Yes.
Okay. That's...
We do that for the dry run, we do that for the parkway, we do that for other projects.
We didn't have to use it for the dry run.
People don't live in the dry run.
We never used it.
We, we, we could've used it for the dry run, and the people...
But we didn't have to, because people sold the house to us on their own volition, yeah.
So one thing about... We were able to come to an agreement prior to going to the step of eminent domain.
One thing about the eminent domain law is that the property owner is made whole. So, we aren't left with a farmstead that has no buildings. So, we would have a shed, and we would have a grain bin, and we would have a well, and we would be able to have a home there. And what the city's offering us today does not allow us to be made whole at all.
One of the questions, I guess, maybe going back to the values of, you know, talking about others who are paid ten percent higher, I guess as I look just at Beacon, one of the properties, we paid $20,979 per acre. One of the properties paid $63,000 per acre.
I don't, I don't recall, I, I just know that the FAA allowed us ten percent, and there may have been a little bit higher than that at, at one of the, one or more of them, but I didn't think it was as much as twenty percent.
Was that the city's appraisal, or the...
Twenty thousand dollars an acre is not market value.
It was twelve or thirteen at the time that we were acquiring those properties.
I, I think, if I understand this correctly, coming back to your comment about making, making you whole, that I think what that means is that it would be just compensation of what a willing buyer would pay for the property. I think that's how that making whole is understood.
And I don't think $285,000 is in the ballpark.
And just, you've kinda touched on this, but if this gets passed, and it does go to eminent domain proceedings, and your land is taken from you, that means, does that mean you no longer will be able to run your business, because you won't have a well and water and electricity and buildings?
It depends if we are able to be compensated so that we can rebuild on a different area, or in a different part of the, the homestead area.
What you're saying is you can't do that now with the offer that...
Right.
Didn't, didn't you just say though, Bill, that there would be access to that? Or did I misunderstand that?
That's part of the negotiations. We've, we've offered to allow them to lease back the building, use the well, use the, use the road coming in, because the road is on the land that we're trying to acquire.
To be perfectly honest, I have no desire to lease anything from the city of Waverly after the hell that we've been put through over the past ten years. We, we had talked about it, you know, a couple of years ago, but that's, we don't wanna do that, we just wanna be done with it.
When was the farm homesteaded?
My parents bought it from another family, but we've been there, I think, fifty-two years, fifty-one years?
I just, I just show from the assessment, it was built 1910. I guess to Tim's point about who was there first, the airport was built 1966. So to me, there's houses, you know, as I go through Hickory Heights, there's a lot of houses older than 1966, so we're forcing people out of their house. And to me, I, it's just offensive that we would expand it, expand this airport, I'd have a hard time finding the support across the city of Waverly that we would spend money to expand it, much less, I'm not sure they understand that we're forcing people off their farms to expand it. And they were, the airport was built 1966, we have houses built before then, so someday, you know, how do the rest of us know that maybe someday something else is gonna happen, and they're gonna kick us out of our home? And I don't wanna start that precedence.
So your parents did buy this house before the airport was built?
I was one when we moved there, so I don't know.
Yeah, that's true.
I think it was like in sixty-five that we bought the farm? Is that it? Sixty-five or...
I'd ask too, do you know, by adding this four hundred foot, yes, as a safety zone, how much revenue, more revenue are we gonna bring into the city as a result of it? Are we gonna bring any? Is the airport gonna expand and be way more profitable? I doubt it. You know, if we add this four hundred foot onto the airport, is it going to be able, I mean, that's pretty much the limit, am I wrong? How far we can go with that?
That's as long as we can do here.
That's as long as you'll ever, that's as, as good as it ever gets. So, it's not the first step in a development process, it's not, you know, the end game. To Dave's point, your equipment doesn't get any bigger, you're, you're not gonna be able to land larger aircraft. Its function is gonna, in essence, remain the same.
Today, it's unlimited use to crop, you know, to ag, ag applications, and if we got one or two or three, four hundred feet, and we all know that a crop duster doesn't eat thirty-two hundred feet, they turn the plane around in half mile rows, but, so, we don't, we don't need that. So that's my ju, that's my concern, if, if, you know, if, if we had a compelling reason, if we could expand it, that could add some economic value, I, I'm not sure I would still force people out of their homes to do it. But that we're expanding it and taking someone's home, so a private business can lower their insurance costs, that's, that's a little bit unsettling to me.
I think it'd be fair to say that at this point though, that the house is substantially fire damaged, and hasn't, you know, and, and needs to be repaired, if it was gonna be retained, if there wasn't a need to take it. And the property value that they've been taxed on is about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars per year.
Well, what they said was they would've fixed it right away, if they could've.
And we've been, our appraisal's actually taken into consideration what they receive from the insurance company, and what the, the house would've been worth if it's in good shape, and it's actually offering them the full value.
That was five years ago. I mean, that was insurance money that was paid five years ago. And that's loss of income for, for a period of time. I mean, I'd be concerned, I mean, that's, through this whole process, you know, they've, they've endured a lot of loss of income through, through it, besides now facing eminent domain based on that situation.
And that was back when my dad was alive, and that was the choice he made. He took the insurance money because he had been talking to the city about tearing the house down anyway, so he, that's what he chose.
Right. I think we did have an agreement with Daddy.
Yeah, and I think he, he wanted to get this all taken care of before he died. He knew he was sick, he wanted to get it done, and he didn't wanna leave a mess for us.
Dan?
I think what Dan, I think what Dan said though, very excellent point, is that by adding four hundred feet, this isn't a master plan to have the airport keep growing and growing and growing, this is it. All we can add is a small, tiny little four hundred feet, which still leaves us as a very small airport in Iowa, that still doesn't allow us to, according to people in the back row, land jets. So, what is the end game with the airport? Because, like you said, we're not incrementally gonna keep making this better, this is it. We can only go four hundred feet, and there's, there's a railroad on one side, and there's a highway on the other, and there's nowhere else we can go. So, what economic impact to the town is four hundred foot of runway really gonna have, when you're considering that we're taking people's land, homes, farms, businesses away from them? And, you know, if it was the Cedar River Parkway, that is, that we started on one end of town and did halfway to the other, and now we're gonna go across the river, and you can see the economic impact as businesses and homes fill in, that is an ongoing project that we've kept moving and moving forward. This is a one-stop, can you imagine building a four hundred foot road somewhere? And calling that economic growth? I mean, it just, that doesn't, that's not gonna do you any good. So I, that's an excellent point that I hadn't thought of, that Dan said.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll go back to, to acquiring the safety zone allows us to use and apply for federal money to add hangars, not just four hundred, whether we do the four hundred extension or not, to add hangars, which would increase the number of people that would be able to use the airport, because they would be able to have their planes here. It would increase the revenue to the airport because of the hangar rental, that would eliminate the subsidy to the airport, which is only $10,000 out of the general fund this year. So it's, it's drop in the bucket compared to other entities that we subsidize fairly heavily in the city. It encourages or allows the, the business that is there, yes, it allows them security, but it also allows anybody else that wants to use the airport security, in terms of the insurance.
If, if you built more hangars, who would pay for the new hangars? And what would be the payback in rental on the new hangars? You know, are we gonna have to borrow money to build hangars?
I remember the amount, I don't remember the amount, but I know Mike had some charts as far as, from, it's shared with the Airport Commission showing the subsidy that we've had over the years from the airport, and how much that's gone down considerably.
Are the hangars, are the hangars able to get federal funding as well?
Yes, but only if we have the safety zone.
Only if we have the safety zone.
But we've built hangars over the past years with state and local funding.
Not any new hangars for quite a while.
We've repaired some, I think.
Probably ten years, it's probably been more than ten years.
Could be, so, ten-year-old hangar, I mean, my house is seventy years old, so I don't know what a hangar, whole building, falls apart in ten years, but, yeah.
When you're done, Wes, I think we're gonna call, roll call.
One question I have, and this is just airport question, but, you know, Tim talks about how they don't, we have to put money into it, because they don't quite make enough, but the city of Waverly, when we sell fuel to planes, that goes to our fixed base operator, and they make money off of that, that doesn't come to the city of Waverly, is my opinion. And they make money off of that. That doesn't come to the city of Waverly, is my understanding. Is that correct?
These are all done by agreement. There's a hundred and five general aviation airports and there is some variation from airport to airport. It's up to each local entity to negotiate the terms of the agreement.
How does our airport work? When we, when there is fuel sold to a plane at our airport, who gets the money?
Cedar Valley Aviation is the fixed base operator and they, in fact, manage the airport on our behalf. And for fuel sales, they keep the revenue.
So we don't even get, so if more people would use the airport, the city of Waverly is not going to get any more money because there's no fuel, not from fuel.
As I said, there's a hundred and five general aviation airports. Each one has their own agreement. I believe some do take a portion of the fuel sales.
But we're talking about Waverly right now.
It's, it can be renegotiated.
Good luck with that. You're going to take all their fuel money away from the, how, why would they stay with us if we're going to take all their, that's their whole revenue?
I think we're just keep going here. Let's, I'd like to.
Just one more question. How many, how many hangars do we have?
We have eleven in the T hangar structure. We have six small standalone hangars. And then we have the bulk hangar facility.
I guess I show in the last five years, we have twenty, twenty-nine planes that, that called Waverly as their base.
Correct. That's probably about right, yeah.
Last year, thirteen of them didn't move the plane, according to airport records.
That's possible.
So if we're going to build more hangars, we're going to build more hangars to, I guess I'm, I'm questioning why, how, how many hangars would we build?
There, well, as far as the build outs, there's a build out scenario. And then there's the, you don't build them all at once. You, you do them as projects. So I think what's been identified is maybe like doing a four bay T hangar that could be expanded upon. There's, there's different variations and some of it's going to depend on the need.
Okay, I think we're.
I guess my point, though, is we're, so now we're talking, now we're, we've changed this to we need to build hangars. But I'm finding that half our planes that are in the hangars aren't actually flying. So there's no revenue. They're not bringing revenue. They're not, they're not supporting a business in town.
Paying hangar rent.
Ninety-five bucks a month. So.
Better than nothing.
Close. But my point is we're, we're forcing somebody off a farm and half the people don't fly the planes that have the hangars.
And again, we need to extend that runway for safety, period. And.
Farm's going to continue to exist, so. I don't think it is, according to what we just heard from the family.
Okay, but I think we're ready for roll call.
You would be removing a farm and a family from that farm.
Resnick check.
No.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Gabe.
Nope.
Angus.
Yes.
Lampy.
No.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resolution seventeen dash twenty-eight passes four to three. Regular business item number seven is to hire legal services to complete this land acquisition. A formal motion would be in order.
I would approve a resolution seventeen twenty-nine, a resolution authorizing a contract for legal services between the city of Waverly and Kevin Arnholz of Beecher Field, Walker, Morris, Hoffman and Johnson P.C. For legal services for eminent domain proceedings, for the acquisition of certain real estate, for the Waverly Municipal Airport Safety Expansion Project. For an hourly fee of two hundred dollars per hour for all services performed under the contract for attorney time and ninety-five dollars per hour for time devoted to this matter for legal assistance and paralegals, plus expenses incurred with ninety percent of the contract cost being reimbursed by the FAA.
Second, please.
Second.
Council discussion.
So the hourly fee, is it two hundred an hour or is it two ninety-five per hour?
Two hundred.
What's the, what's the, what's, why is, what's the ninety-five per hour?
Depends who's doing the work.
Oh, yeah, that'd be for legal assistance.
But they could be going on at the same time, so we could be paying two ninety-five an hour.
They do different work.
They could be going on at the same time.
If you have a legal assistant doing work for you, it's, you're not spending the two hundred dollars per hour a lot of times because you're spending the ninety-five instead.
I guess that was under, as what you said, if we voted on that and approved it, we would, as a city, negotiate with them. So we're going to immediately hire lawyers to go straight to eminent domain right away without negotiating with them first?
I think we're kidding ourselves. There's.
Yeah, there's no negotiating going on. We're just, we're just hiring lawyers.
I think in our materials, and I think in our materials, it said that, that this would be the entity that would also be doing some negotiation. Didn't it say that?
I would probably keep negotiating, but if it, if it worked to have that attorney negotiate also, that would be, use them for that purpose.
Yes, these are the attorneys that will be doing the.
Right. But if you look at the, if you read the stuff that we got, I think it also said that if, if it would appear to be fairer to have a third party, that they could also participate in that.
That would have been great to think of over the last five years, to have a third party negotiate. And we could have saved, maybe saved, taken a home away. It's just interesting that we just talked about how, well, you know, if you vote for this, we're going to negotiate, we're going to negotiate. And the very nice thing is let's hire attorneys to get this done and go to eminent.
I think, I think your point is.
Yep, I'm sure I made my point. No more.
Public input. Roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Gabe.
No.
Angus.
Yes.
Lampy.
No.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resnick check.
No.
Resolution seventeen dash twenty-nine passes four to three. Regular business item number eight is the discussion of the Third Street Southeast Bridge Options. I think I'm going to look to Tim, maybe, to, do you want to lead that or you want us to?
Well, I'd asked for it to be on the agenda since we had voted not to do the repair option at this point. Again, I think there's been miscommunication, misunderstanding or, or misleading on how people have phrased that. Just because we voted no on the repair option for this year does not totally mean it's, it's gone and, and done and never going to come back again. We have the plans and specs for doing a repair option if we decide to do that and budget it in. And again, you know, people have tried to characterize what the vote was and what it isn't. My vote was primarily not to impact the budget the way it was going to this year. We didn't have it fit in there. It's something we can look at for the future. But I also wanted to look at the chance of, now that we have what the bids were, what the, what the cost for that was, to look at the possibility of, again, maintaining the bridge, retaining the historic nature of the bridge and, and seeing what it would take converting it to pedestrian only. Which would include some of the, some changes in terms of, with pedestrian bridge, you wouldn't need the sidewalk on the side of it. So you could eliminate the, that weight cost of that, of the stress on it. We could raise, possibly look at raising the bridge, since we're going to have to redo the piers anyways. Raise that so that it's out of the flood plain. That was one of the, the concerns a number of people had with just simply repairing the bridge is that it would still be in the flood plain. So by raising it, and as long as we're making ADA compliance, we're not maybe necessarily needing as much space with raising it as we would with cars to have the approach with it, the gradualness or whatever. There's options that we could do to keep it ADA compliant without necessarily lengthening out those approaches to the bridge while having it raised. So it's kind of looking at some of what are those options in terms of still being able to keep the historic bridge, but using it, utilizing it in a way that is more conducive going forward. And talking over what are some of the possibilities and then what one possibility might even be to look at saying this commit, the city would commit to the cost of what the, what a brand new pedestrian bridge would be and put out for a challenge, basically, to fundraise for the rest within the community to cover the cost of, of the difference in there. So those are, those are some options within there. Dan had some thoughts as well.
Well, no, I think we all, we all agree that, well, we don't all agree, but I think the residents of the neighborhood is a pretty strong consensus that they do not feel that a two-lane bridge in that location is really what we need to look at. From a historical standpoint, I know the group that calls themselves the Residents for Repair has been pretty adamant. Number one, they'd like to keep the original bridge. If that is not a possibility, they would settle for a new bridge, but that would not be ideal, a new pedestrian bridge.
Say that again. Say the last part again.
They would be okay with a new truss style pedestrian bridge, which would be a reduced cost considerable. I did do a little bit of research on that. Spoke with Brian Connell from Minowa Construction. He indicated that his total cost, he could do the bridge for, and I understand he's trying to get work. But his total cost for a new truss style bridge would be about one point four million.
Pedestrian only?
Pedestrian only. Prefabricated pedestrian only bridge. Again, Residents Repair, I know they sent out an email saying that they would prefer to retain the historical nature of the bridge and want to see that continue. But from a life, life perspective also, that may be, and budgetary standpoint, that may not be, and the cost may be prohibited.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious because I, you know, I think probably because of the at-large position, I, you know, hear from people all over. Well, we probably all do, on the Green Bridge especially. But I, I've heard from a lot of First, First Street people who, who would not be of that opinion. Are you, who are you counting in there as the neighborhood, I guess? Just the street, right? People that are right at the bridge or?
I don't have geographic locations for everyone. I know there's a big voice on Third Street.
Yeah.
I feel the same way.
Yeah.
I can't speak for you, but. You know, trying to keep the traffic, the traffic out of that neighborhood, especially with, you know, the before mentioned two-lane option, which I don't think was very popular. I know it wasn't as popular in the neighborhood. I know Tim. Oh, sorry.
Carlos giving us signals.
Giving the, the microphone signal. I think it's very important, too, that the bridge be raised. I know you mentioned that from a flood, flooding perspective.
You're saying raised with an I and not with a Z? Am I hearing you right?
Increase the elevation. I think that's important from possible, from a, from a standpoint, I think Mike and I have talked about this too, from a possibility of doing some other flood control work in Southeast, in Southeast Waverly. If you leave it at its current, if you leave it at the current elevation, there really isn't a whole lot we can do. So I think that, that would be vital as far as the future of any option there would be to, to increase to get it up out of the flood plain.
It gets complex. I gotta.
You know, it's frustrating. You know, there's never been a real clear cut, you know, consensus on anything that we, you know, we've had this for now three years.
Yeah, this, and I do appreciate everyone weighing in and I think we're evolving. It's just that it's hard to get a feel for what can really, really happen.
From a budgetary pers, I know there was a lot of, we got an awful lot of input on raising the levy to pay for a two-lane or a, a single lane repair option. And I'm not, I don't have the exact figures, but I think the, the option for making it a pedestrian, repairing it for pedestrian use is similar. I mean, you still have to replace the piers. You still have to do the work to the abutments. I'm not sure we'd get a whole lot of support, unfortunately, in that respect, spending that much money on a sidewalk. But, you know, the, the reduced or a new, a new, something that would look like the original in nature could be, could be embraced, I think, and could fit into our budget a little bit better.
Interesting idea to consider a new pedestrian bridge. I assume you're factoring into that the cost of taking out the old one?
That was included in the figure that Brian gave.
That is included.
In the one point.
I think it'd be good if we could see more specifics on that maybe at a future meeting.
Yeah, maybe. I mean, because all of that, any more specifics is going to cost again, probably, to some degree.
Increased engineering. You'd have to, you'd have to engineer that solution.
I mean, I, I, for the first time more recently, am hearing things that I didn't hear before. And I think probably a little bit the result of our, our decision. And that is, would it make any sense to now maybe just, just focus on our other projects? Especially the Cedar River Parkway. Get that done. Let those couple of years play out. See how we're doing then, and then come back full bore with making a decision about, about the bridge. I mean, I, I, I'm not necessarily advocating for that. I'm still thinking about all that stuff myself. But that, I'm surprised that there have been, you know, several people who've contacted me who are saying that, which I didn't hear so much before.
You know, what we've got on the horizon, I'll think about, you know, all the projects that we've got, you know, you've got a, you know, Twentieth Street, the Cedar River Parkway, new treatment facility, you know, all these things that we're going to have to bond for. Bremer Avenue, Water Main, you know, all of those things. How is, how is it going to fit into the budget?
I guess one thing I'll look for personally going forward is, again, and it may be my understanding was in the repair process, the, the strength that had to be built into the bridge was exactly the same if it had a vehicle on it versus a pedestrian. Was that at the five-ton limit?
Five-ton, right, yeah. So for vehicles, that we, you're sitting right at the minimum, five-ton to begin with.
Again, from working with that area through several floods, to me, we have an opportunity to, if we go pedestrian only, I would want us to see what the cost would be to make it accessible to emergency vehicles during natural disasters, those type of things. Can we get a fire truck across it? Can we get Waverly Light and Power struck across it? I think we could give that area some other options if that bridge would allow us to get folks in there. That may change too, if we do something on Seventh where we open that window up a little.
Yeah, if we do the Southeast Waverly flood protection to.
I just want, that'll be something that I'll keep bringing up as we go forward is if it's pedestrian only, what are the costs to make a vehicle accessible during natural disasters and?
Keep it complex. Just to represent the different conversations I have, Mary, I've talked a couple of times. Got it also a call from people on First Street where I live and all wanting. I'd be careful on the all there, Wes. Most, most, most wanting, the people that were part of this discussion and many of these people you know already, but they want vehicle crossing. And they want it in the worst way. They think that we absolutely need to pay for it. It's part of the infrastructure. We need to be able to get vehicles across there. We have homes, large homes in this area that are, that are going towards younger families with children. We got to get to Southeast School. Sometimes kids can walk, but a lot of times they have to be driven there. And, and, and so we have to have access to Southeast Elementary.
Well, I would say that we've been without a bridge there for two years.
I know, and what they're doing is going around. And then they're saying, as our town grows and as Bremer Avenue, da-da-da, and CMI, that Bremer Avenue is going to get even more busy, especially at the rush times, and that they need to have simple access and it'll make the neighborhood. I know, I'm not saying, I'm just presenting, I'm presenting their side and, and.
I don't think there's been any Southeast Schools students that were denied going to school because of the bridge.
No, no, because my neighbors used to drive across there all the time. Now they're going up and around.
And I used to drive across there daily too, but I've been, I've managed to make it through, yeah.
I wonder what the long-term plan of Southeast School will be, if that school's going to be here seventy-five years from now?
gonna be here 75 years from now? Or what, what, you know, they might have.
I think without a bridge, it'd be really hard to keep a school there personally. I mean, cut off access.
But even, but even, even with a bridge, as we saw the, the middle school project, and, you know, we see schools across the country, you know, probably going to a, a single building more efficient, kinda like the middle school, I don't, I'm not, I'm not.
They don't have the money to do that now, but I think at some point.
I'm not sure if we've talked to them.
All of our elementary schools are getting rather old, but, you know, they didn't even redraw the maps for the school districts, and so unfortunately, there's all these southeast school parents and children trapped on the side of the river, they can't even get across, you know, two blocks to their school they go to, so they have to drive all the way around town, and, and so.
I did ask, probably about two or three months ago, before we voted, but, the last time on the bridge, but I, I, I did ask whether the school board, you know, had any, you know, visioning exercises or anything even more concrete than that, and it sure didn't sound like that there was anything, I mean, sure in the future, something's gonna have to happen, but it's a long way out, I think.
Yeah, well, they're struggling with their budget right now, so there's no way they're gonna have any new projects coming up soon, but Cary School is extremely old, Southeast is extremely, I mean, West Cedar's the newest school we have, and that was around when I was a kid, and so we have a lot of old elementary schools in town then.
Yeah.
If they were rebuilt, I doubt that would be the location that the school would be built at, so.
I mean, I would speak to, I have neighbors who live, you know, north of the bridge, who need to, the children ride their bikes to southeast schools, and it's a very long route for them. So if it was a pedestrian or bicycle bridge, it would be much faster. Now, if you're packing the kids up into the car, I don't know that it makes a huge difference how far it is if you're using your car as opposed to using pedal power. I mean, once you load up the kids, I mean, okay, from my experience, the most time-consuming part of taking my kids to school is actually getting them into the vehicle. Once they're buckled in and we're moving, that's not the hard part.
It still makes a difference though, if you worked on the, on, you know, on the north side of town, and you had to drive all the way to Bremer, all the way to southeast, and turn all the way back around, drive all the way out to, you know, all the.
Well, I will say that in a few weeks, it's gonna be really exciting when those kids can't walk on Bremer Avenue, and they actually have to go all the way up to the railroad bridge to cross the river and then come back down.
And that's gonna be dangerous for kids, and that's kinda why I voted in the first place for.
And I think that the, the lack of a bridge is going to be especially heartfelt while Bremer Avenue is under construction, and I think you're gonna be hearing more calls for a need for that bridge. And, I mean, every time we do construction on Bremer Avenue, there is an increased call for getting that extra bridge. Once we have the Cedar Parkway Bridge, we will see how desperate that need for a bridge at Third Street is.
But that's, yeah, that was exactly my reason for voting for repairing the Green Bridge in the first place, was to get us that, so that when Bremer Avenue could be redone, we would have a bridge, when, until Cedar River Parkway would be done, we would have a bridge, and then 10, 15 years down the road, we could always turn it into pedestrian after that. But at least we would have cars while we needed them, until the rest of the bridges in town were all done, so. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, and so we have some totally different in front of us, but.
Seems like we're having the same conversation.
That'd have been great input before we voted on the.
Well, it, it, it's a, a long process, and thank you, Tim, for bringing this up. Maybe you should wrap up.
Well, just from James or from Mike, what is a process in terms of, I know we had, when WKH, WHKS did kind of the study, they gave us six, six options, included replacement, replacement pedestrian only, repair, repair, yeah, you got all of our.
I think there are, yeah.
I don't know how much more would go into that to look at. I know, talking, that there's any kind of change to the usage of the bridge beyond just the straight repair would require probably more permitting from the Corps of Engineers and DNR and some of that study, but kind of that process, what is, what is the process moving forward in terms of?
Can you say, Mike, that if we changed, sorry, if we change the use, we will probably end up being required to raise it out of the floodplain, correct?
We're, we're pretty much 90% sure that that's gonna happen, that they were very reluctant, and it took a lot of explanation from Casey to get them to agree that, that, you know, repairing the structure and maintaining integrity and the, and the exact use, you know, that we had before it was shut, they, they kinda said, okay, but to convert it into a pedestrian only, that's a dramatic change, you're, you're no longer using it as a vehicle bridge. We're pretty sure that they're gonna require us to raise it to get above the 100-year floodplain, so, you know, a new vehicle bridge would have to be, a new pedestrian bridge would have to be, and taking the existing structure and retrofitting into pedestrian only, we're pretty sure we're gonna have to raise it as well.
So I guess council would need to choose a direction first, would be the first thing you're gonna have to do, and then we would look at what it's gonna take for engineering timeframe, get a hold of WHKS again to start getting that put together, costing, I know we have estimates that are out there, but again, first step is you have to choose a direction. What are, what are we gonna do? Is it a new pedestrian, is it a reconfigured pedestrian, is it a new replacement two lane? That would be your first step.
Or waiting.
Or, or waiting, that's correct.
Or waiting.
So, do we wait, do we leave the bridge there, is that an option, you know, I mean, we almost should.
You can leave it, you can take it out, you can, whatever you'd like to do, you can certainly do that too, if you chose to wait. It's pretty wide open, the only thing you've eliminated, at least at this point, is the repair option. So, that's kinda where we sit, is almost where we were a year ago, except there's one less set of options out there, but all the rest are still in play.
Is there any exposure from the city right now on a liability standpoint? It's a closed bridge, there's still an awful lot of traffic across it.
We're gonna secure the ends of it with chain link fence.
Make sure it's very closed, not just pull the fence back and walk across it, so.
Is there any risk, I mean, I mean, at some point, it's gonna have to be torn down, because obviously it'll just fall in the river, or lead paint will start falling off and fall in the river, and we'll get calls from the EPA and crap about that, but, and get fines. But, so I mean, I, you know, I remember when they were talking about the bridge, they said that if it would fall, it would just fall like a couple feet, land on the next landing, it wouldn't actually fall into the river the way it was built, but is there ever, is there, is there a risk of it actually falling into the river that we need to worry about?
No, I'm not concerned unless there's a major flood event, and what.
Which there could be.
Sure.
This week, with all the rain we've gotten, right?
It could be after spending $3 million to repair it, or, you know, you always still had that risk. You don't have the repetitive loading and fatigue cracking anymore, when you did, when, so take that paper clip, bend it back, how many times do you have to flex it before it breaks? That's gone. You don't have vehicles tracking de-icing salts out onto the structure, that's gone. So, you know, it, it can sit a while. You, you don't have to tear it out next month, next year, you, you've got some time.
See, I think that's one thing that is so hard for citizens and people, anyone to understand, is that, so the bridge is safe to sit there, it's not gonna fall away, it's not going anywhere, but yet, you can't ride your bike across it, you can't even walk across it, because of the way they do the calculations on that.
You have to account for what if they have the 5K road race that goes across it?
Right.
What if you've got, you know, I saw the, the Warburg Track Team outrun it, you got 30, 40, 50 kids going across the sidewalk at one time.
I tried to explain to people, didn't he say once, I mean, they literally have to act like there's a person standing, like, the whole bridge is full of people.
Right.
And so even though that, that will probably never happen, that's the rules that we have to live by, and so even though usually we'll have three or four people crossing with bikes, we can't open it.
When they, grand opening for the repairs that were done in like 1963, they got everyone from Southeast Elementary School out onto the bridge. It can happen.
Well, good thing there were kids. Fifty pounders on them.
Oh, so, Tim, you wanna take this to the end here, or where you, do you wanna go with it?
I don't know, but, I mean, that was kind of the thought.
That was.
We have to, as a council, we have to kind of.
Find out where we're gonna go, and.
Make the decision on, on a direction, so.
I'd be interested in getting input from the school board, because if they're gonna keep the school districts lined up the way they are, I would think, you know, I still get complaints, as I'm sure most of you do, that I can't get my, you know, kids to school, and they can't walk to school. My kids used to walk to school every day, or they used to ride my bikes to school every day, and now they have to go through Bremer, and it's dangerous, and you hear all this kinda stuff, and so if the school district isn't gonna remap stuff to shift kids around so that there isn't a nice, easy, direct path to a school, that you don't have to go across the highway to get to, I would like to know some of that, and that might help us make a decision, because if they're not gonna remap it, and everyone in your neighborhood still has to get their kids there, and there's no safe way for, you know, a nine-year-old or an eight-year-old that normally would walk on a nice residential street and across the little bridge to school, but they have to walk down Highway 3 instead, that makes a big difference, you know.
And to know if they're gonna maintain that school for 70 years.
That too, which they probably aren't, but even in the short term, for the next 10, 15 years, if they're not even gonna remap the districts, we're putting a lot of strain on families by not doing something there.
Some of the issue you have today is even if you have a house right next to the school, your child may not go to that school.
No, I'm aware of that, yeah.
So even if they remap, you're still gonna have kids having to travel across town, different places, different schools.
You do, but the majority of it is, there are cases where if you move into town and something's full, and you go to a different school, they don't make you move the next year, they keep you there, and if your brother already goes there.
You can be fairly close, and still not go there, is what I'm getting at, because it is full, they can remap it.
Yeah, my brother has that, I, yeah, my brother has that exact thing, and.
And just where they've got their elementaries right now, and.
But 90, we're talking 90% of them go to the district, you know, and then you have your one offset, if the school's full, they have to go somewhere else, or if you move in, and, like, my brother moved in, and so my nephew goes to Cary, well then, instead of sending his little sister to southeast, she also goes to Cary, even though they live, you know, by the bridge, so, it's just the way the school system works, but.
Okay, well, the answer is, we're gonna need to set a direction, and the, for the public, the debate for a year was between repair and replace, but you had these little side discussions going, and now it's getting a little bit more complex. A lot of people are expecting us just to replace it, but it's not gonna happen that quick, we're in different fiscal years, we're gonna need to watch the Parkway come, and so.
I wonder if we shouldn't, I mean, if, you know, given that it's, that it's, you know, not in the, in the current or in the upcoming budget, and I wonder if we shouldn't at least just make a point of, of waiting and focusing on the, on the projects we have going, but making a very purposeful, a decision to include certain kinds of information to help us come to a decision as we, as we build the 1819, 1819 budget. I mean, that, that we, you know, that we don't let it languish and forget about it, but, you know, let's, let's talk about what information do we want, school board information, I don't know, you know, more information on a pedestrian, or whatever it is we want, without spending a ton of money, I mean, on it, but gathering, but just letting it sit a little bit, but making sure we've got the information we need going into the 1819 budget discussions.
I think another point too, that we really need to look at is, is flood control, you know, after last September, that got brought back up as far as, and how does any solution there fit in with flood control and that?
We do have that study funded for next year, after July, and that study is in budget.
Hydralix study.
Yep, southeast flood area has been funded, so that can take place in the meantime as well, after July 1st.
And because then the decision point could still be, well, we don't know enough about what Cedar River Parkway, you know, we don't know where we, I mean, we're not far enough along on that yet, or we don't have enough information, it could be postponed again if we needed to, but at least we would be intentionally making that decision. Yes, you know, we're gonna do something or we're not for 1819.
You know, take flood control into situation too, you know, one of the options that Mike brought up was raising 7th Avenue.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that.
And that would give you egress to what I call the island, in and out, and how does that fit with maybe a pedestrian bridge that would be higher, would open the channel up maybe a little bit, let the water get away, I think it all needs to work together.
Like a study will hopefully incorporate all that possibility in.
So if you have a 7th Avenue, which is a viable means of egress into the neighborhood, do you really need a two lane bridge there, or any bridge, or any vehicle bridge there, to where you could put in a pedestrian bridge to service, you know, the trail people and the people that are, you know, their kids gotta get back and forth to southeast school?
Yeah, because that's really the first rail that goes under, not the bridge, I mean, that.
Correct, 7th Avenue.
Yep, so if that was available to stay above water.
And I know, Mike, you suggested that would be some sort of a, I mean, could be constructed as.
It's not gonna give you 100-year protection, but maybe it, it allows you accessibility during the type of event we had last September.
Okay, thank you, public, for patience. We are under due process and doing the best we can. Our Board of Adjustments gave us some minutes for March 13th, any comments? Officially received staff comments?
I have no idea, staff comments, I know Bill has something he needs to go through, anyone else? All right, Bill, if you would.
Obviously, you saw the barricades start going up this morning on Bremer Avenue, they were a little bit confusing because they stopped, and basically what they were doing is putting up the barricades so they could put the barricade down the middle of the road, and then the, the rain washed them out for the day. So they'll be back tomorrow to, to continue that process, where the, hopefully they'll get the center concrete barriers in place, and then they'll move the lanes to the inside, and the work will be on the outside, and that will keep moving forward. Paula Stevenson is working, from the chamber, is working with the city as our B, business liaison. I know she's been up and down Bremer Avenue, she's talked with business owners, business, property owners. I've been doing the same thing, at least in the area where we're talking about water lines, and, and getting people educated about the, the extension of water lines into the buildings, so we'll move forward with that as the project moves forward. Other than that, I think everybody has a pretty good understanding of what's going on, we're gonna try to keep maps on our, our website. We have the stage one map up right now on our website. We will continue to add the stages as they start the new stage, or when they get ready to start the new stage, but we'll keep all the stages in a folder on that website, so she'll get, be able to get to that, and we'll get those up, we're working on those now to get those on the, on the website. So we're trying to get as much information, if you wanna get information on a weekly basis, we're gonna try to do Facebook posts, reminders of what's going next, if there's any changes that are gonna happen, we wanna make sure people are aware. I know Paula's planning on, when there's changes gonna happen to a new stage, going to the new area, or going to new, new businesses or people to, to let them know what's going on. So we're trying to get as much information as possible. Very soon, Paula will have a, kind of a hotline phone number that she'll have, that she'll carry a phone with her, and we'll get that published on, on Facebook, and the website, the like, and she'll be passing out a couple hundred cards probably with that same number on it. It'll be staffed at all times, which means when Paula's out of town, I'll probably get it, or Travis will get it, or one of us will, will have it, so that we can answer those questions in real time and not wait 24 hours to get back to you. We hope to get answers right away to people, and, and we're the go-between, or at least Paula's gonna be the go-between, between what the city's doing, what the DOT's doing, what the contractor's doing, and she'll have access to those people on a weekly basis, and be able to answer some questions. So we're there to help you, please give us, you know, give Paula a call, give us a call if you need to, and we'll try to take care of any questions you have or issues that arise.
Counsel, are we hearing anything we need to feed to Bill or James?
I just wondered, you said it's gonna be on the website too?
Yes, it's on the website right now.
Everybody's Facebook members or users or whatever.
It is on the website, if you go to the front page of the Waverly website, the city Waverly website, there's a thing called Bremer Avenue Reconstruction, you click on it, you go right to the page, right to the, where the information is gonna be located.
Okay, thank you. Counsel comments, Ms. Wallstein?
I don't have any.
Mr. Lampy? Mr. Restic? Mr. Gade? Our wonderful. Our wonderful Brian. Thank you for entering in. Any closing comments? One mayoral comment, Cafe 506. Might have seen that in the paper. This will be Cafe Open, 11:30 to 1:30, one day a month. I think I have that right. At the Senior Center, but worth the trip. Starts tomorrow. So if you'd like a wonderful meal, you can go over to the Senior Center between 11:30 and 1:30 and purchase a nice lunch.
And do we understand that's going to benefit veterans? Is that right?
Yes. Thank you.
And someone else? There's veterans and, and I can't remember. What, Senior Center?
The Senior Center, yeah.